Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Aurora City Council for Tuesday, May 5th, Cinco de Mayo, 2015. And Whitey Peters, Dan. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman, Garza, Messiacos, Donnell, Peters, Seville, Hartburns, Mervine, Bug, Johnson, Irvin, O'Connor, Mayor Weisner.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant-at-Arms for tonight's meeting? Moved by Almond and Shakita Hartburns, seconded by Almond and Irvin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried by voice vote. Thank you, Officer, for being with us tonight. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items under new business? Moved by Almond and Shakita Hartburns, seconded by Almond and Irvin. Will Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman, Garza, Messiacos, Donnell, Peters, Seville, Hartburns, Mervine, Bug, Johnson, Irvin.
Yes.
Eleven i zero nace.
Thank you very much. Clerk, will you read the title of the new business item, please?
Item fifteen dash three eighty-four, swearing-in of newly-elected officials.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome, one and all. It's great to see you. We have a great crowd here tonight, representing a great city. And tonight, we celebrate the election of a number of new, or a reelection of a number of aldermen, and the election of a new alderman as well. And it's a time when I think it's good to remember that this country is one of not very many across the world, where democracy controls, democracy is the basis of our, of our lives and our government. And this is where we freely elect our representatives, and tonight's a very good example of that. And it is time to celebrate, I think. And so, I look forward to celebrating with you tonight, and I would turn over the evening's events to Clayton Mohan.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, thank you for coming out. Let's give our council a round of applause for all of the work that they continuously do here in the city of Aurora. We're so happy to be here at the 2015 inauguration ceremony for six of our elected officials as they take the reins to continue to move this city forward. Would all of our guests please rise for the presentation of colors, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the National Anthem? Color guard, parade the colors.
Color guard, left, right, yes, three. Colors.
Our color guard is provided by the East Aurora NJROTC. The NJROTC is in its eighteenth year, and is the largest in the United States of America with nearly one thousand student cadets. The unit's drill team and color guard accomplishments are seven-time Area-III State Champions, and they've reached the Navy's national competitions in Florida for seven years, capturing the 2014 National Championship in Color Guard Competition. The unarmed drill team was awarded first place overall in the nation this year. Today's color guard participants are: Carrying the American Flag, Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Jasmine Aragon; Carrying the Navy Flag, Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Wendy Lopez; Carrying the Left Rifle, Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Montserrat Pitt; and Carrying the Right Rifle, Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Sandra Webb. We'll now be joined by Quinn Irving, seventh grader at Granger Middle School, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To lead us in the National Anthem, from the Grammy Award-winning Wobonzi Valley Show Choir, Mr. Brandon Stoll.
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, Quinn, and thank you, Brandon. Would all of our guests please remain standing until the colors have retired?
Yes, three. Colors.
Color guard post.
Oh, march, march.
We have one more round of applause to the largest NJROTC unit in the United States of America, East Aurora High School, NJROTC. Thank you. And while you remain standing, please welcome to the podium the Senior Pastor of Main Baptist Church, the Reverend Dr. Julian Spencer.
Shall we pray? Our Father and our God, we are so grateful to you for life, for health, for strength, and we're so thankful to you for this opportunity to celebrate these servants of our community that have been elected into office to protect our city, to promote our city, and to make sure that our city is the best that it can be. Lord, we pray for them. Your Word teaches us that all powers, all leadership, is in your hands. And I pray, God, that as we give them to you tonight, and as they are sworn in to serve this city, that you, God, would keep them in your hands, that you would lead them and guide them, that you would give them a consciousness that decisions that they make affect everyone in this city. And I pray, God, that you would give them wisdom, guidance, grace, and most of all, love for their fellow man and our fellow man. We thank you for this night, and we ask you to be with us. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Tonight, we are here to celebrate and to swear in six elected officials who will join the other six to form the 2015 and beyond Aurora City Council. First Ward Alderman Christina Bowman, please give her a round of applause. We're here also to celebrate Third Ward Alderman Ted Messiacos. Newly-elected Fifth Ward Alderman Carl Franco. Sixth Ward Alderman Michael Seville. Eighth Ward Alderman Rick Mervine. And Alderman-at-Large Richard Irving. And we bid farewell as he retires to the longtime Alderman and Aurora friend, Alderman Whitey Peters. Oh, you could do better than that. He has served this city so faithfully, for so many years. We appreciate your service and your dedication to this city, Alderman Peters.
Is this the longest retirement in the history of the city? I think they're gonna be glad when it's over. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And as we prepare to swear them in individually, it is my honor to introduce the Honorable Judge Renee Cruz, who was appointed as Associate Judge in the Sixteenth Judicial Circuit Court of Illinois in November of 2012, making him the first Latino judge ever to serve in Kane County. A native of Panama, he graduated cum laude from the Citadel in 1992, and in 1995, he earned his Juris Doctorate, also cum laude, from Northern Illinois University Law School. He practiced law for seventeen years here in Aurora, most recently as a partner and founder of the Law Offices of Gil and Cruz. He's very dedicated to this community, serving as the past President and Legal Counsel for the Aurora Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, a member of the Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board, the Family Focus Board, and Erasmus Usin College. In 2008, he was elected as the Hispanic Chamber Professional of the Year, and in 2010, Cruz was named the Alumni's of the Year from NIU Law School. Please join me in welcoming the Honorable Judge Renee Cruz. We will ask First Alderman Bowman to please step down. Your immediate family members, please come down.
If you'd raise your right hand for me, please, and repeat after me. I Christina Bowman.
I Christina Bowman.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman of the First Ward.
Having been elected Alderman of the First Ward.
In the city of Aurora, Illinois.
In the city of Aurora, Illinois.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage.
Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Kendall and Will, aforesaid.
Kane and.
Kendall and Will, aforesaid.
Kendall and Will, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman of the First Ward.
As Alderman of the First Ward.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, everyone. This is why I love Aurora, all of you, and especially the First Ward, my family, my campaign, my Ward Committee. Aurora is going great guns. I want to see a better future for working for Ward One and working for the city of Aurora. I love you all. Thank you so much for this opportunity, your support, and again, thank you for coming tonight.
Applause for Alderman Tina Bowman, Aurora's First Ward. Keep the applause going for our Third Ward Alderman, Alderman Ted Messiacos. His family also, they join him on the dais.
If you'd raise your right hand for me, please, and repeat after me. I Theodores Messiacos.
I Theodores Messiacos.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman of the Third Ward.
Having been elected to the office of the Third Ward.
In the city of Aurora.
In the city of Aurora.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, and Kendall.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, and Kendall.
And Will, aforesaid.
And Will, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman of the Third Ward.
Of the office of the Alderman of the Third Ward.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
ladies and gentlemen. It is a privilege to stand before you this evening. I would like to begin by thanking my wife for her patience and primarily for her sense of humor, which has been genuinely tested the past two years as I've been serving as And thank you to my entire family and friends for their unwavering support. Before I was sworn in two years ago, I was concerned at times with the thought of sharing my time away from a young family to serve my community on the city council, until I quickly discovered a new passion. I enjoy discussing our community topics and challenges with residents. My interest in discussion was always there, but my awareness to listen is ever-growing. I will continually strive to remember that as a privilege to serve as an Alderman, I hope that people who labor for me and support me still understand that I will continue to show my appreciation through every contribution on behalf of the Third Ward and the entire city of Aurora. I will continue to approach this office with humility for the faith and trust that has been placed in me. I once again feel honored by this blessed occasion, and I will sincerely continue to do my best to respect that honor. To my Third Ward constituents and neighbors, thank you once again for the opportunity to be of service.
And as he leaves his seat, we can keep the retirement party applause going for Alderman Whitey Peters. We're gonna extend his retirement out, Alderman Peters. Please welcome, for swearing-in, Alderman-elect Carl Franco of the Fifth Ward.
If you'd raise your right hand for me, please, and repeat after me. I Carl Franco.
I Carl Franco.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Of the Fifth Ward in the city of Aurora.
Of the Fifth Ward in the city of Aurora.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will.
And the counties of DuPage, Kane, Kendall, and Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of the office of Alderman of the Fifth Ward.
Of the office of Alderman of the Fifth Ward.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, let me first say that it's an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to serve and represent the Fifth Ward in Aurora. Twenty-six years ago, my wife and I were looking for a place to move, settle down, and raise our family, and we had a lot of choices, and we chose Aurora. And at the time, we thought we made a good decision. Twenty-six years later, as we look back at it, it was a great decision. It provided an environment for my family to grow and prosper, and I'm proud to call Aurora my home. Looking to the future, I know the city of Aurora faces many challenges, challenges that are unique to a city of two-hundred thousand people. I look forward to working with the other aldermen, the city, and the residents to meet those challenges and make Aurora an even better place to live, and I thank my friends and my family and everybody in Aurora that supports the city. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, now Alderman Carl Franco. Round of applause as he takes his seat to begin his tenure as Alderman of the Fifth Ward, Alderman Carl Franco. Please welcome Sixth Ward Alderman Michael Seville.
I Michael B. Seville.
I Michael B. Seville.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Of the Sixth Ward in the city of Aurora, Illinois.
Of the Sixth Ward in the city of Aurora, Illinois.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman of the Sixth Ward.
Of the office of Alderman of the Sixth Ward.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, and good evening. While I stand here before you, having just taken the oath of office for Alderman of the Sixth Ward for the ninth time, and I'm here to tell you I am one lucky guy. I've been Alderman now for thirty years, and although it would seem like a long time going forward, looking back on it, it's just been like an eye blink in time. In fact, I really only notice it when I look in the mirror. But I've been really blessed having been serving on the city council, and I'd just like to say, you know, our former government was initiated, the Aldermanic Ward former government was initiated in nineteen seventy-seven, and there's only been two Aldermen in the history of the Sixth Ward serving our community, and the other person is my mentor and good friend, Chad Albright, and Chad is here this evening, and Chad, I just want to give a shout out to you, and thank you for all of your years of service to our community, and just showing me the ropes and teaching me everything you knew. I really appreciate it. So, together with the amount of time that I've been serving on the city council, before that, I served on the Planet Commission for four and a half years. So I've been an Alderman on the Planet Commission and being of service for thirty-five and a half years total, and it's really been my pleasure to serve the citizens of Aurora. It's really been my dream, and I'm so indeed grateful for the opportunity. I'd like to extend my heartfelt thanks to my friends and supporters that are not only here this evening, but have supported me all these many years. Your friendship is heartfelt for me. It really means a lot, and I really appreciate all of your support and your confidence in me over the years, and I'm truly grateful for all of you. I think there's much to be accomplished in the next four years, and I'd like to say that I'm looking forward to working with the mayor and the city council. I think there's much to be done. I think we're making good progress. I think we can do a lot to continue to improve our great city that I love so much, and I just want to thank everyone again. So, thank you very much.
Serving for thirty years, Alderman Mike Seville. Please welcome our Eighth Ward Alderman, Alderman Rick Mervine.
If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I Rick Mervine.
I Rick Mervine.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Of the Eighth Ward of the city of Aurora, Illinois.
Of the Eighth Ward of the city of Aurora, Illinois.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman of the Eighth Ward.
Of the office of Alderman of the Eighth Ward.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you all for being here and helping us celebrate this milestone on the council. For me, I've just completed seven years, and it was almost twenty-eight years ago that my wife and I and daughter, young daughter, moved to Aurora, and we had quite a bit of time to be able to look and find a place, and we made a decision at that point that we knew was the right decision, but I'll tell you, over the years, it just reaffirmed and reaffirmed and reaffirmed. And my love for this city, and our love as a family for this city, not only is through the city, and it's all through the Park District, our school district, we're in school district two oh four, and the complete package that we have here, okay? I want to thank a lot, a number of people. First, my wife of forty years, Phyllis, for her support. My daughter Katie, who was a big help during the campaign as well. I've got a really good campaign team of people that are not only campaigning, but they're friends as well. Mike Jalaflo, Brenda and Moel Cordero, Krishna Boncel, and that core team really helped pull things together for me this time, and really thankful for them. And then, there was an extended group, and some of those are here today, and we'll go celebrate over at the Paramount here afterwards, so. I also want to thank all those that supported and endorsed me for this election. You step out on a very thin ledge when you do that, but you step out with the knowledge that you're trying to do something right for this, right for this city, and I thank you for all of your support. And I also want to thank Whitey Peters for twelve years of service, not on the council, but for over thirty years of service to this community, and for being a good Roll Mile. And thank you, Whitey. I'm very humbled to be in this position to serve the residents of the Eighth Ward and the greater city of Aurora for the next four years, but I also continue to be very excited about it. Sometimes, that doesn't always show through, because I'm not a person given to a lot of excess along those lines. But I'm very excited about the prospects we have as a city. I am, this last decade has been a very difficult time of test, but it's also been a very positive time of change for this city, and that test and change has brought us a very new beginning, and that's all very positive, but it's not perfect, and there's work to be done. There were financial pressures from every angle, but most important pressures are the ones we put on ourselves and the ones we put on ourselves from this day forward as well. We need to make sure that we keep the pressure on bringing in new jobs and new businesses into this city, because that takes the pressure off of us as residents as well, and that's very positive, okay? This is not a city that can afford to waste a lot of time and energy. We need to take what we have and run with it and run strong with it, but it is a city that's shown a propensity to look ahead and to work with a very smart plan for the future and make it come to fruition. As it's always been, it's time to get to work, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Eighth Ward Alderman Rick Mervine. Please join me in welcoming Alderman-at-Large Richard C. Irvin. Please join me in welcoming Alderman-at-Large Richard C. Irving.
All right, if you'd raise your right hand for me, please, and repeat after me. I Richard C. Irving.
I Richard C. Irving.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman-at-Large.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman-at-Large.
In the city of Aurora, Illinois.
In the city of Aurora, Illinois.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will.
And the counties of Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Alderman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Alderman-at-Large.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, and Judge Cruz, thank you very much for everyone that's here today. You know, first of all, let me just say, we gotta give it up for Judge Cruz one more time. He and I were colleagues for many years before he took the bench. Matter of fact, I shared office space in the Gil and Cruz Building for about eight years before he became a judge, so it is a privilege for me to be sworn in by a gentleman that I call my friend today. Now, I remember when I first swore in, this is my, I'm swearing in my third term as Alderman, when I swore in for the first time, my little boy here was about this tall. As you can see, he's taller than me now. And my daughter was about this tall. She's not a whole lot taller, but she's a lot wiser and a whole lot more committed and smarter than she was that day. Matter of fact, she graduated from college about a week ago. And I am very proud of her. My mom, my Uncle Bubby, thank you very much for standing with me and supporting me over the years. Now, when I swore in eight years ago in my first term as Aldman-at-Large, I absolutely loved this city. That feeling has not changed a bit today. I love this city as much as I did the first time I swore in as Aldman-at-Large, and I will continue to love this city. I feel like I am Aurora, and Aurora is who I am, and it's my privilege and my pleasure to continue to serve the citizens of Aurora, all of the citizens of Aurora. So thank you very much for coming out tonight. Thank you very much for supporting me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you for one more term. Thank you very much.
Alderman-at-Large Richard Irving. One more round of applause for all of our elected officials. We're so happy to watch this city moving forward. Please join me on behalf of the mayor in this city to thank the Honorable Judge Renee Cruz for all of his work over the years and for being here this evening, and his lovely wife Sylvia. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Join me in thanking again the Senior Pastor of Maine Baptist Church, Reverend Dr. Julian Spencer. And we thank our students from east, our students from Wabonzi Valley, and our student from west who couldn't make it tonight. He was held up with another engagement, but Quinn stepped up to the plate, much like his dad, stepped up to the plate last minute and said, "I'll help out." So let's give all of our students a round of applause. Thank you, thank you, thank you again. We invite you to join us and to celebrate with all of our City Council at the Paramount Theater for a reception in their honor. We thank you for your commitment to this city. We thank all of you, all twelve of you, thirteen with the mayor, for your service. We know exceptionally well what service means to this city. You prove it every single day. It was once said, "The service is the price that you pay for your rent on this earth." And if that is the case, the rent is well paid in Aurora. Round of applause for the City Council of Aurora, Illinois. Thank you for coming, and we appreciate your support. Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn, and second it, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, one and all, for being here tonight, and please join us at the Paramount.